Prudence and insight for the efficient and effective government. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Snae.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Herniman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayler.
Here.
And Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show all seven members of council are present this evening. Minutes from January 6th, 2025, regular in committee, the whole meetings were distributed as well as January 13th, 2025, special meeting events. Are there any questions, corrections, or additions on these? Okay, these minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under Committee Reports, Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Law and Community Planning, Councilmember Kayler.
Thank you, Madam President. The Law and Community Planning Committee met in city chambers on January 13th, 2025, starting at 6:10 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss mayor's requests for legislation 2501 and 2505, as well as any other business to come before the committee. Attending were committee members John Kayler, John Hayes, and Dennis Snae. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, Law Director Zachary Fowler, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, City Council President Bridget Boyle, Council Clerk Ann Forrest, Council Members Kevin Reesner, Scott Herniman, Erin Jones, John Hayes, Cheyenne Thacker, and City of Tiffin Public Works Superintendent Brandon Burner. The committee first addressed mayor's request for legislation 25-01, which requested certain updates to Tiffin City Ordinances, Chapter 723, Mobile Food Unit Vendor's License. Several years ago, City Council passed legislation regarding certain requirements for mobile food vendors in Tiffin. The current law provides for certain locations where mobile food vendors may set up and sell their products. Those locations include City Lots 5, 6, 7, and the TSET lot. In the past, the process for a mobile food vendor to get a permit to set up and sell in Tiffin was a bit of a patchwork process. It often required going to several different city departments to get a permit. The process has since been streamlined so that most vendors are able to obtain a permit with just one visit to the city administrator's office. The most significant proposed change to the current law is a $250 deposit that vendors would pay to ensure that their area is cleaned up and not damaged when they leave. It was suggested that perhaps this matter should be tabled so that the committee can do further research on additional possible changes, such as whether there should be a requirement that mobile vendors maintain a certain distance from local restaurants. That research may include reviewing legislation that other municipalities have recently enacted. Councilmember Dennis Snae made a motion to table the issue for later discussion. Councilmember John Hayes seconded the motion. The motion passed unanimously. The committee then addressed mayor's request for legislation 25-05, which seeks to authorize the solicitation of requests for quotes, RFQs, for engineering services and to execute a design and construction administration and inspection contract with the selected consultant for the 2025 River and Creek Wall Rehabilitation Project. City of Tiffin Public Works Superintendent Brandon Burner explained that the city of Tiffin owns two miles of concrete and masonry river and creek walls with a height ranging from seven feet to over 25 feet tall. Cracking and spalling concrete and dislodged portions of the wall are a cause for concern. The city needs to find a contractor who can assess the condition of the walls, prioritize repairs or further investigation based on safety, program rehabilitation and maintenance, design and inspect any necessary point repairs, and provide specifications, drawings, schedules, et cetera, for long-term maintenance best practices. The estimated design cost is $75,000, and those funds have already been earmarked for the project. Councilmember John Hayes moved to recommend that the Law Director draft legislation in support of mayor's request for legislation 25-05. Councilmember Dennis Snae seconded the motion. The motion passed unanimously. With no other business to discuss, the meeting adjourned at 6:44 PM. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions on that report? Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Hayes.
No report, Madam President.
Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Snae.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. The Recreation and Public Property Committee met in city chambers on January 13th, 2025, starting at 6:42 PM. Purpose of this meeting was to discuss the mayor's request for legislation 24-52 and 24-53, as well as any other business to come before the committee. Attending were committee members Dennis Snae Chair, Erin Jones, and Scott Herniman. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, Law Director Zachary Fowler, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, City Council President Bridget Boyle, and Council Members Kevin Reesner and Cheyenne Thacker. The committee first addressed mayor's request for legislation 24-52, sale of Luisa K. Fast Park. City Administrator Nick Dutrow started with giving history background of the sale auction of said park. The two-acre park is outside of the city limits and needs many repairs. Badly maintained concrete pad and rarely used. We maintain the park with ground keeping, which costs the city about $2,000 annually. We would like to remove this property from the city's portfolio through an auction while the federal government would bear the cost of such an action. The city of Tiffin owes nothing on this property, and the federal government are the benefactors of the sale auction. A local appraiser estimated the value of property at approximately $35,000, while the federal government thinks it is worth $90,000 based on highest of best use. Nick also said that this legislation needs to go three readings since it is sale property. This legislation needs to deem this park not usable for a park. Nick also... Nick went on to say that the auction will take place sometime in the spring. Councilmember Jones said it is outside of the city limits and said I saw that we do not lose sight of honoring Mrs. Fast. Councilmember Herniman mentioned that we ask the mayor to request legislation when working on Applejack Park to honor Luisa K. Fast, especially since she lived across the street from said park. Jones requested a motion for Law Director Fowler to draft legislation, and Herniman seconded the motion. The motion passed unanimously. The committee then addressed the mayor's request for legislation 24-53, which authorized the city administrator to prepare plans and specifications advertised for a received bid. I recommend an executed contract for the Applejack Park project. This project is supported by funds obtained through the Community Development Block Grant Program and administered through TSET. The city administrator explained where the money comes from and how it is to be spent. He mentioned that the due to the grant money is not stretching as far, that we will need to use dollars from the city's general fund, possibly renovating Applejack Park to Luisa Cave Park. I mentioned that the mayor requested this legislation be passed with an emergency and suspension of the council's three reading rule. Councilmember Herniman mentioned history that people wanted something done with Applejack Park. Councilmember said that this legislation seems positive. Jones made a motion requesting the Law Director to draft legislation for 24-53. Councilmember Herniman seconded the motion. The motion passed unanimously. With no other business to discuss, the meeting adjourned at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Any questions on that committee report? All right. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I do have a report. A Street sidewalks and sewers committee meeting was held on January 13th, 2024, at 5:30 PM in council chambers. Attending were committee members Cheyenne Thacker, Erin Jones, Scott Herniman, Kevin Reesner, and Dennis Snae, along with councilmembers John Hayes and John Kayler, Council President Bridget Boyle, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, City Public Works Superintendent Brandon Burner, Law Director Zachary Fowler, Clerk of Council Ann Forrest, and Mayor Lee Wilkinson. Thacker called the meeting to order. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss mayor's request for legislation 25-02, Road Salt Competitive Bid Acquisition, 2503, Street Sweep Release, 2504, Curb Lawn Restoration Program, and any other business that may come before them. Burner gave the committee information on the ODOT Road Salt Competitive Bid. For the last few years, the city has purchased Road Salt through this program. This has allowed the city to get more competitive pricing for Road Salt. Recent motion to have the Law Director prepare legislation, Jones seconded the motion. The motion passed 5 to 0. Burner gave the committee information about a new street sweeper lease. The current sweeper is 10 years old and not in great condition and wasn't a great machine from the beginning. The new proposed machine is smaller and more compact. However, it has more attachment options, cameras, and is four-wheel steering. Also, because it's smaller, it fits in our older buildings better. It is at least to own over five years. Eventually, we will sell the old street sweeper once we have the new one. To capitalize on a specific interest rate, Burner asked council to consider passing under suspension and emergency. Snae motioned to have the Law Director prepare legislation. Jones seconded the motion. The motion passed 5 to 0. Burner gave the committee information about the Curb Lawn Restoration Program. The purpose of the program is to restore lawn areas that are currently covered in gravel and are in the right of way. There have been eight requests so far from citizens to restore their lawn. It is being paid for through the ODNR grant the city received and additional funds already accounted for in the budget for 2025. It is a voluntary program and is at no cost to the residents who request to be part of the program. Burner requested that it pass with an emergency and under suspension. Jones motioned to have the Law Director prepare legislation. Reesner seconded the motion. The motion passed 5 to 0. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 6:04 PM.
Thank you. Any questions on that committee report? All right. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Herniman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need for a committee the whole meeting? Okay, we are now under reports of the officers. His Honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would like to remind our listeners, our general public, that in this cold weather, please do not use heating devices that are designed for outdoor spaces in your home. And if you do have heating devices in your home for this cold weather, make sure that all flammables are removed from the area, so try to keep them safe. Okay, so moving on from there. I had the privilege of participating in a panel discussion about housing with the League of Women Voters last Wednesday night. It was very good and informative. Also got to speak to the Quanis Club of Tiffin last Thursday about the exciting things coming up for Tiffin in 2025. That was fun. And just a little while ago tonight, at the Isaac Walton League of Seneca County, I got to help them celebrate their 100th anniversary. They focus on conservation and education. They also partner with the City of Tiffin Parks and Rec to host the fishing derby for the little ones every summer. That's really good. Last week, I had the honor and privilege of swearing in three new firefighters last week. Congratulations to Thomas Bland, Andrew... And I'm gonna mess up the last name, I'm sure. Andrew, you next? Help me out there, Nick, if you know a better pronunciation on that. And Austin Woods. So those are three firefighters, brand new to Tiffin Fire and Rescue. But now I'd like to introduce Debbie Schultz, who's with us today. She is the Vice President of the North Ohio Lake Erie Nurse Honor Guard, and she's gonna tell us a little bit about that.
Thank you for having me. Dennis, I'm gonna... So, as the mayor said, I'm Debbie Schultz. I have been a registered nurse for 43 years. And I'm closing in on the end of my career as a registered nurse and was kind of looking for something that was going to be satisfying, fulfilling, and kind of helped me continue with the goal that I went into nursing to try to make a difference in people's lives with their family and patients. And so, so I was looking, you know, for something to continue into retirement, looking at doing some medical mission trips. But earlier this past summer, one of... There was a nurse that passed away in our community. And she... She was my Lamaze instructor twice. She was my children's pediatric nurse several times. And then her son married my sister. So she became a very dear and special woman in my, in my life. And she passed away from colon cancer. And so we quickly, because we had seen this program in action on the internet, and, and wanted to do something to commemorate... I'm sorry, commemorate and honor her and give her privilege for all the things that she did throughout her career. And so, one of our, our coworkers, one of my coworkers, then developed what we currently are. And our, we are known as the North Ohio Lake Erie Nurse Honor Guard Program. Our guard program was founded by Brenda Baker. She currently, and she does hold an RN, she has her MSN, and she too is retired and, you know, kind of works a little bit PRN on the side because nurses, we do find it kind of hard to let go of our careers completely and just walk away. But in this, in this program, she went with her best friend, and she actually found out about it through Wyandotte County. They set up a program there. And each, each program serves numerous counties. So for example, our group serves Erie, Huron, Ottawa, Sandusky, and Seneca Counties. And I am the Seneca County rep. I, I am the one who lives here in Seneca County. So, and, and so we, we serve five different counties. But just yesterday, we had a nurse pass away in another section of the state. And because of weather, it was kind of hard to get some of the nurses there. So the groups of these nurses, these Honor Guard nurses, come together and still perform a tribute to honor these nurses and honor them in their careers. So our unit currently has 20 active members, and we're always looking for more. Our goal actually is to eventually have 10 to 15 members out of each county so that if something like yesterday happened again, we would have enough members that we wouldn't necessarily have to draw from all meetings or we would not have to turn somebody down because we have had to do that. And that's an awful feeling to have to tell a family, "I'm sorry, no, we can't honor your mother in this special tribute because we don't have enough people." So, so we're looking for more members. Usually works better with part-timer retired nurses because they have more time to give and donate. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, so any donations made to our organization are tax deductible. And just a little background, because I, I had some surgery and so I, I was doing a little bit of research. The Nurse Honor Guard Program currently has 60 organizations throughout the 88 counties in the state of Ohio. And actually, that's a significant number because the Nurse Honor Guard Program wasn't established until 2019 in South Carolina. And there are only currently 250 programs across the nation. So of those 250 programs, the state of Ohio has 60 of those programs. And, you know, that's kind of something we as Ohioans are pretty proud of. Like I was leading to earlier, a nurse never really stops being a nurse even in retirement. It often shapes us and is a huge part of who we are. It's a large part of our lives. Our career path can be demanding, intense. It can be stressful. It can be peaceful. It can be intimate. It can be rewarding. And that can all be at the same time. So when a nurse passes away, this tribute is just a small acknowledgement that may provide their grieving family members a bit of peace and comfort and satisfaction that what their family member did certainly made an impact and a difference in this world. These tributes are done on a volunteer basis, and there's never a charge for any of these tributes or ceremonies. The ceremony usually lasts 10 to 15 minutes. What we do is we send out once we... Each one of us, as I said, I'm responsible for Seneca County. So, you know, I have the gruesome task of scanning the obituaries every day for nurses who've passed away and, you know, to pass that on. And what we do then is we reach out to the funeral home and we ask them, "Is this..." Because we've, we've already sent out letters, but we didn't get a huge response. So, you know, now we're to the point where we're gonna start making in-person visits. But we want to obtain that information, and we have a form that the family actually fills out. And it's, it's actually really great if you have that form ahead of time for, you know, if that's something that, you know, your family member might be interested in. Because after my friend passed away, I turned around to my husband at the service and I said, "Listen, I'm telling you right now, I want that done in my funeral. And if you don't do that at my funeral service, I'm gonna come back and haunt you. So make sure that you have it done." So I actually have already filled out my form so that when, you know, when the time comes, it's ready to go. And so what we ask is, you know, we, we want to know personal information about that nurse. Where did, where did that nurse work? What did they do? What were the most favorite parts of their job? What were the least favorite parts of their job? How long did they work as a nurse? And then we proceed then with a poem that was written by Dwayne Jaeger. And it was, it's called "She Was There." And it just symbolizes the importance of that nurse being wherever she was needed in any specific circumstance and is very emotional. Next, we begin and do the Nightingale Tribute, which is actually named after Florence Nightingale. The tribute begins with a roll call that is performed. And we call out all the nurses who may be present at that tribute. We ask the nurses that are in the audience if they're able to, to stand. And then we, we go through and we do a roll call. Call each person's name and, you know, respond with "I am here." And then the nurses in the audience respond. And then we call out the deceased nurse's name. And when we don't get a response, we have a chime. So she's chimed once. We call her name again. She gets her second chime. And at the third chime, we then relieve her from... Thank her for her service, and we relieve her of active duty. And we tell her, "We've, we've got you covered from here. Go on, you know, and, you know, live peacefully in, in, in the great beyond." It's, it's, it's very emotional. I'm sorry. At the end of that roll call, we then, we have a Florence Nightingale lamp. And so, and there's a candle attached to it. So we distinct, we extinguish the candle and we present the lamp with a white rose to the family member. The white rose actually symbolizes the nurse's dedication to their profession. The Honor Guard uniform consists of white scrubs, their, their caps, which a lot of ours are yellow, that were once upon, you know, once upon a time, very white. And the, and the navy capes. Florence Nightingale was known for wearing a very heavy wool cape with a red, red lining. And we have capes very similar to that that we wear. As I said, the tribute was named after Florence Nightingale. She was the first professional, she was the first one to develop the first nursing school in 1860. And as I said, it was named after her because you could always find her making her rounds with a lamp and a ca, a candle. And she'd do her rounds and see her patients by candlelight. So again, the Nurse Honor Guard Group is a group of volunteer nurses who come together to pay tribute to those who've dedicated their lives to caring for others in their communities, their states, their countries, and their worlds. The nursing legacy is woven into the fabric of our personalities and thus remembering how they cared for others. They deserve to be honored, celebrated, and remembered in such a special way. And so our group has just started in July. We meet every Tuesday, or the first Tuesday of the month at, at the Berchard Library in Fremont, Ohio. I think I, you have information there. If you would like to share that information with any nurses that you know, please feel free to do so. Because it's, it's... I, I think as a nurse, speaking for myself, that reward and satisfaction that I got... um, I was a hospice nurse, so I got a lot of satisfaction in the job that I did. Some people think, well, that's that's just kind of, you know, a little strange. But I I developed a rapport with the family. I developed a rapport with the patient. I helped make that transition for that patient um so much easier than what it possibly could have been. And I developed a trust with the family so that I could guide them when the time came through this whole process that was going to need to be done. And for me, there's there's no greater satisfaction in being able to do that. And that's why I became a nurse. So being able to continue this is truly an honor and a privilege. So um, as I said, it's just getting started. We would greatly appreciate any support um or, you know, sharing of knowledge to anybody that you might know because I, it's it's a truly satisfying tribute. So, thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak, yes.
Madam President, um, so this is a couple of things.
Yes.
Is there, is it okay uh that we, your contact information?
Yes.
Are we allowed to submit that?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Brendan, my information actually is on the back of that that one, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so we do, we are in the process of putting, I I think you guys got um, if you if you attended the commissioners' meeting, you you got a colored brochure. We did not, um, the library did not have the capability of doing colored brochures and updating like I needed them to update, so. Um, but that that is another thing. You know, just putting it out there, we're looking for a social media director. You know, and of course, you know how these things are done free of charge. So anybody who knows anything about social media and they they'd like to at least get that service on their resume, we'd be, we'd be happy to have them. Um, I think that we have one at large board member position still available that we're looking to fill. And um, you know, of course, and and what was really nice about yesterday with the group of nurses coming together is that that family actually made a donation. Um, we, you know, and we got to split it because we are a brand new organization. So our our money, our funds are are literally at the bottom, so. Um, and who knew postage was so expensive? But um, yeah, so so those are the things that we're looking for. Um, but I am the Seneca County rep, so if you ever have any questions or if you want to send somebody my way, please feel free. Um, if you ever have any questions, any, you know, anything at all, I'm available and more than happy to talk to anybody about it.
Um, uh, the military and uh, you know, it kind of, what you were describing, the ceremony, a lot, lot of it is uh similar to
Correct.
the fallen soldier and help, you know,
Yes.
I helped perform some of those.
Mm-hmm.
And so, it's uh, it's very honorable.
It's very humbling.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
It's very humbling, it's very rewarding. Yes.
The roll call really hits you hard. Um, so is everybody here, I'm sure everyone here has a nurse friend, a family member that's a nurse, he or she, so please let them know uh what they do with it, but let, give them the information, let them know, uh, you know, someday, when they pass on, maybe the Honor Guard will be there for them. So uh definitely a worthwhile cause.
Thank you, Debbie, for sharing all that with us. And we'll do what we can to get that information out there.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, anybody else have a comment or question? And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Clerk of Counsel Anne Forrest.
Your report, Madam President.
Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
Madam President, I just had a couple of things for this evening. Um, the first one is I'm requesting suspension for ordinance twenty twenty five dash twelve. And this is just to put some of these funds into the budget so that they could be used as soon as possible. We have several things for the police department. There was a body armor grant received. They sold some scrap for metal. And um, they also had a donation for the canine program. Fire Department had a donation as well for fire training. And the Engineers Department had a insurance reimbursement that they need to have work done on their vehicle. So if we could suspend that so we can get these um funds into the budget as soon as possible, that that would be wonderful. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay, um, I also have your financial report for December twenty twenty four. Total receipts for the month were five million, five hundred thirty one thousand, one hundred dollars and twenty four cents. Total expenses for the month were five million, four hundred thirteen thousand, fifty three dollars and forty two cents. General fund unencumbered balance is six million, fifty thousand, one hundred eighty seven dollars and ninety six cents. The income tax receipts for December twenty twenty four were one million, one hundred twenty seven thousand, three hundred three dollars and ninety nine cents. The total annual increase in income tax collections for December twenty twenty four when compared to December twenty twenty three is fifty one thousand, two hundred sixty one dollars and forty three cents. Year-to-date income tax receipts were up four point nine eight percent. The portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund Two Fifteen for Public Streets for December twenty twenty four was a hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred fifty five dollars and sixty two cents. The unexpended balance for all funds is forty million, one hundred twenty eight thousand, forty eight dollars and ninety six cents, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Reisner.
I move to accept the finance director's report for month ending December twenty twenty four and the bank reconciliation.
Thank you, there's a motion to accept the finance director's report and bank reconciliation for the month of December as their second, Councilmember Herniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you, there's a motion in the second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And Director of Law Zach Fowler.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, I just have a few items for you. Um, I know I said this by email, but just um a follow up on our special meeting. So if you recall, AT&T put out their tariff application back in mid-December, um, which had this broad language about if their facilities are to be relocated and um undergrounded, that are in a public right-of-way, that the cost of that was to be on the public entity. Uh, the municipal league, High Municipal League had asked for opposition on that, asked for support from the members we met um last Monday to vote on that, and you all passed that resolution. Um, as a result, the municipal league filed their opposition on January fifteenth and later that day, AT&T withdrew its um application. So for now, uh, the issue is over. Um, but the municipal league and their attorneys have said this is likely not to go away, they will probably resubmit um in the future. Um, so thank you all for for at least taking that up. Uh, the other thing is, if you recall, the end of last year, um, you had asked and authorized me to do a petition about the um matching the city boundaries um to that of Clinton and Hopewell Township. Uh, that became effective January fifteenth, so I have that ready. I just need one piece of uh legislation from the clerk um for that. Um, and then I can submit that to the county commissioners. They should pass that right away. Um, and all it's effectively doing is matching Clinton and Hopewell Township boundaries to the city, so there won't really be anything further, it will just clarify the boundary lines. And with that, uh, those are my two items, that concludes my report.
Any questions on that? All right, thank you. That takes us to written communications.
Mayor's request for legislation number twenty five dash oh six, allocation of opioid settlement funds.
Thank you, Mayor's request for legislation number twenty five oh six is assigned to the Finance Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number twenty five dash oh seven, application to NPEPC, Energize Community Grant.
Mayor's request for legislation number twenty five dash oh seven is also assigned to the Finance Committee.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty four dash one, to amend the two thousand twenty five budget ordinance twenty four dash ninety four to appropriate funds into the engineer, fire, and police budgets.
Thank you, Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty four dash one is prepared tonight as ordinance twenty five dash twelve.
And Finance Director's letter dated January seventeenth, two thousand twenty five with an attached list of unclaimed funds.
Thank you, this will be held on file in the clerk's office.
And that concludes your written communications.
Perfect, thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. Okay, seeing none, uh, we are now under motions, are there any motions this evening? Okay, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number two thousand twenty five dash two, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of approving the passage of an ordinance to amend sections one ninety seven point oh one two and one ninety seven point oh one three of the codified ordinances of the city of Tiffin, Ohio, in order to provide for the continuation of an existing one quarter percent municipal income tax increase for a continuing period of time to provide funds to pay certain costs of maintaining, repairing, and improving public streets in the city and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, this is the third reading of Resolution twenty five dash two, Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of Resolution twenty twenty five dash two.
Thank you, there's a motion for passage of Resolution twenty five dash two, is there a second? Councilmember Sneay.
I second that motion.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Black Director.
Um, just as a reminder of what you're doing, so this is the legislation, the resolution that will put um the issue on the ballot. And just a reminder, the issue is we're taking the existing quarter um percent for road and bridge purposes for municipal income tax um and taking it from what has been a five-year renewal period and making it a continuous um income tax. Uh, then the other thing that you'll have to do is the next thing will be the ordinance twenty five dash five, that'll need to get tabled and then won't be removed from the table until after um the May primary.
Thank you. Any questions on that, Councilmember Thacker?
Um, so should I try to table that tonight? Or would that be something I would make a motion at the next meeting to table?
You can make a motion after it's read.
Can I do that under other businesses, is that appropriate?
You could do it like, uh,
Immediately after.
You could make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Herniman.
Um, just kind of crunching the numbers for like the road and bridge levy, just kind of for everyone's information and such, you know. Um, the difference between a two percent income tax and a one point seven five, if you're making a forty thousand dollars a year, it costs you an extra hundred dollars a year total. Is the difference between that um for the actual levy and the increase and such. So it's literally under, it's like, yeah, it's like nine dollars a month to have money set aside so that we make sure that the roads and bridges are taken care of and that we have that fund. So I think it's um, I think there's value in it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero, will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Resolution twenty five dash two passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash five, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance amending sections one ninety seven point oh one two and one ninety seven point oh one three of the codified ordinances of the city of Tiffin, Ohio, in order to provide for the continuation of an existing one quarter percent municipal income tax increase for a continuing period of time to provide funds to pay certain costs of maintaining, repairing, and improving public streets in the city.
Thank you, this is the second reading of ordinance twenty five dash five, Councilmember Thacker.
I move to table ordinance twenty twenty five dash five.
Thank you, there's a motion to table ordinance twenty five dash five, is there a second? Councilmember Herniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Thacker.
Uh, just a reminder that we're tabling it until after we know the election results. And leave it up to the voters.
Thank you, any other discussion? Um, seeing none, uh, we'll call a vote on the table, or can I? We'll call a vote on the table, please.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash six, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT Road Salt Contract awarded in two thousand twenty five.
Thank you, this is the first reading of ordinance twenty five dash six.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash seven, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to negotiate and execute a lease purchase agreement for a two thousand twenty five Bootchert City Cat five thousand six street sweeper from the M-Tech Company of Cleveland, Ohio to the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, this is the first reading of ordinance twenty five dash seven, Councilmember Thacker.
I move for immediate passage of ordinance twenty twenty five dash seven, suspending city council's three reading rule.
Thank you, there's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty five dash seven, is there a second? Councilmember Jones.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Thacker.
Uh, yeah, just a reminder for the general public, um, we're trying to pass this under suspension so that we can um go for the lower interest rates while we still have them and lock into this rate.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jay, Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero, will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero, will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty five dash seven passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash eight, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance authorizing the curb lawn restoration program using grant funds from the Urban Forestry Grant Program to assist property owners in removing gravel parking areas in the public right-of-way and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty five dash eight, Councilmember Thacker.
I move for immediate passage of ordinance twenty twenty five dash eight, suspending city council's three reading rule.
Thank you, there's a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty five dash eight, is there a second? Councilmember Reisner.
I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Thacker.
Um, I just wanted to remind people that this is, one, a voluntary program, but also a limited program. So that this is something that you want to capitalize on in front of your own um property, then please contact Brendan in the city.
Thank you, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero, will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero, will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty five dash eight passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash nine, introduced by John Kayler. An ordinance to authorize and direct the city administrator to solicit qualifications from and enter into a contract with a professional design firm for professional design services for maintenance of the city's Sandusky River Wall and Rock Creek Wall.
Thank you, this is the first reading of ordinance twenty five dash nine.
Ordinance number twenty five, two thousand twenty Ordinance number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five dash ten, introduced by Dennis Snay, in ordinance authorizing the sale of municipal real property on North State Route one-on-one, known as the Luisa K. Fast Park, by a public auction.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-five dash ten.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash eleven, introduced by Dennis Snay, in ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, recommend and execute a contract for the Applejack Park Project, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-five dash eleven.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash twelve, introduced by Kevin Reesner.
Sorry, hold on one second.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I move for twenty-five eleven, move for immediate passage of ordinance twenty-five eleven, suspending council's three reading rule.
Okay.
Sorry, I did bring that up.
There is a motion for immediate passage of ordinance twenty-five dash eleven, suspended, suspending council's three reading rule. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second, Madam President.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Snay.
Madam President, we want to get this, the mayor requested this emergency. We would like to get this going, so it's for Applejack Park and get the bids in, get the project going, and so people could enjoy the park during the good weather days.
Thank you. Awesome. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-five dash eleven passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash twelve, introduced by Kevin Reesner, in ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-five budget ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash ninety-four to appropriate funds into the two thousand twenty-five budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-five dash twelve. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance twenty-two five dash twelve, suspending city council's reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance twenty-five dash twelve. Is there a second? Councilmember Snay.
Madam President, I second that motion.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an ordinance putting funds into the budget that involves donations received, insurance reimbursements, donations to the police. We want to especially thank the Visconti for the fire department donation, the Ohio Attorney General, and Tiffin Westgate for their donation into the K-9 program.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-five dash twelve passes with a vote of seven to zero.
That concludes the legislation.
Thank you. Okay, we are now under other business in the agenda. Councilmember Kayler.
Madam President, thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly announce that I will be resigning as Tiffin City Council Member-at-Large effective upon the adjournment of tonight's meeting. I have emailed everybody here and I've submitted my official letter of resignation. The reason for my resignation is due to a conflict of interest, or at least a, an apparent conflict of interest between my being a voting member of city council, which, among other things, votes to fund the police, the city prosecutor's office, et cetera, and my daytime job as a criminal defense attorney. It's taken about a year of research on the matter, but have come to the conclusion with the help of Law Director Zach Fowler, that it is probably a conflict of interest, therefore I think it would be best for me and city council that I resign my position. It's been a pleasure serving with everybody here. I've enjoyed it immensely, and I wish everyone here good luck in the future and good luck appointing my successor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Councilmember Kayler, I think I speak for everyone, and we've likewise feel, the feeling is mutual. You've been a very valuable member of council with your time here. I'm definitely sad and disappointed, you know, but I completely understand and accept your decision. And so, thank you so much for your service. Hopefully, maybe it will be an opportunity in the future, but thank you again.
Thank you.
As we discussed a little bit in the committee, the whole meeting, we do, as council, need to decide on the process to appoint the vacancy, appoint the, that seat as for that vacancy. Given that Councilmember Kayler wasn't independent and not an affiliated party, that does per charter fall to council to fulfill that vacancy. I know we discussed a little bit of potentially the process in order to do so in committee of the whole. I think there were still some open, maybe questions or uncertainty of how we want to proceed with that. I'll open it up to the group. I think specifically, one of the items raised was how we really move forward with the decision or determining process of elimination was one of the, I think, open questions of, do we, if there's more than two submissions for candidates, do we do a continuous round of voting until we receive majority of vote in order to start that elimination process? So, again, don't know if anyone has further thoughts on that. We spoke a little bit ago, but would definitely be open to ideas. Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I truly believe that in order to even be considered, that you should have to fill out the petition as a candidate going forward. I think it would be important and valuable to this, not only to the city, but I think to this group, that we, I would like someone that's interested in the long haul, not just to fill a short-term position and then, you know, move on. That would be my thought on it.
Sure. Councilmember Hayes.
Along with that, may I propose that we give the same date the petitions are due, February fifth, as the date of accepting potential candidates? That could be the cutoff date, and that way we would know if, you know, they filed, they're interested in running again. And then, looking at kind of my calendar, I did without a calendar, I believe we have until February twentieth before it would go to the mayor. Is that correct? That's thirty days.
No, that's a great question. I think I put it in my email, and I know I brought it with me.
That's twenty-second.
I said February twenty-first, just because they can see.
Correct.
It's real, you know, we're starting tomorrow with our counting, so.
Well, that would fall in line, I believe, with our February seventeenth meeting, so we could have the kind of all candidates and a vote that meeting. I thought these, if we can clarify that, that would at least be a starting point for the rest of the decisions we want to make. And if we don't decide in the February seventeenth meeting, it may fall to the mayor at that point, but I think that would kind of give us at least a skeleton of.
Yeah, just to clarify, I believe February seventeenth is President's Day, so I believe that it would be February eighteenth technically, just for super clarification. What we could do if we don't come to a conclusion in that meeting is schedule a special meeting prior to the, did you say the twenty-first? We would just have to do that very quickly, obviously, especially with the twenty-four hours public meeting notice. So that's an option. Yes, Councilmember Thacker.
Can I offer a suggestion that maybe we just schedule a special meeting for the tenth, and then that gives us time in case there is a lot of interest? Especially, I mean, the tenth, if everybody has their items in by the fifth, and then maybe if Nick, if we're going through Nick, he could send out an email with resumes, letters of interest from people. I just think that would make me feel like a little bit less rushed, and like I have some time to think about it, and if we do have to take it to the next meeting.
Eighteenth, yeah.
Then we still have some time. But I like your idea. I think that's a good idea.
Good place to start, at least.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you're going to do the special meeting on the tenth, then if that person is selected, they then would be available for the next regular meeting. So it could work out quite nicely if you did that.
Or if we don't want to, it could be a different night. I just offered that as.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. Okay, so just to recap those couple things, so what we're talking about is having February fifth be the deadline for accepting candidates, so that would be a letter of interest as well as a resume to submit to the city administrator. As he receives them, he will pass them on, but for sure by the fifth being that deadline. Is that correct? Am I outlining that right, or would it be after?
I presented that as somebody who had any issue with that.
The only question I have is when we're talking about making sure that people have filled out a petition, what are we asking for as evidence of that? Are we asking for, like, the receipt that you get from the check that you pay, or what are we, like, I just want there to be some sort of?
I don't think they should fill out the petition, because given notice now, it would be almost criminal, because they don't have enough time to get the signatures, especially for at-large, you're gonna get, what, fifty?
I'm banking on there being enough time to get signatures.
I mean, you've had, you've had plenty of, you have, you know, but it's gonna go out tonight, and someone's gonna say.
They have two weeks from today.
Right.
I, the first time, not to be that person, but the first time that I was interested, I got, like, I don't remember exactly how many signatures, so I'm not gonna say, but I got enough.
Yeah.
Four days.
But they, you do, you wanted, they might.
But I think that's the, I think that's the purpose, right, of what's driving that, is that whoever we would consider to appoint the seat is, has already been thinking about wanting to run for that seat in, for that, for this upcoming election. And so I think that's what the type of candidates that we're trying to drive to consider for this appointment. I mean, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's where really, you know, the intention is here.
I agree.
I think two weeks is plenty of time, honestly. You don't think so?
No, I don't. Yeah, especially if it's.
How many signatures is it?
It's fifty.
For at-large?
At-large, it's fifty.
Yeah.
Councilmember Reesner.
I tend to agree with Councilmember Snay. When I, thinking back on my own experience, I like the idea of trying it out, and then if I wanted to continue on, I know that, you know, they could do both things, but it gives them the option if you just want to make it short-term.
But that wouldn't give them the option then.
But they could just do till the end of twenty-two five.
Till the end, and then they're out for two years, you know?
Right.
You know, and so.
They would know that, though.
I guess my point is, is you, then you're just filling that position for a few months to let someone test drive the car, and then they're not gonna buy it for two years. Just doesn't make any sense, you know, because you, they wouldn't have that opportunity to run. I mean, when, I don't know, I can't speak for everybody else, I made my decision way in advance to run.
Right.
And I think, I think that's important, because it shows that you're, number one, you're interested, and number two, you're gonna go out there and you're gonna get those signatures. And I think just to have the, you know, the continuity of the group, and as far as for the city, I think it's important that we want someone for the long term. I stand by that one hundred percent. This is my thought.
I know a couple of you, your hands raised, but I, in my, I would recommend that as well, in the sense that the person then actually has extra time to get up to speed on the processes of things and, and, you know, the what, the different levels of council and everything that comes before council and what you're deciding on. And it's actually, it's giving that extra time versus having them get up to speed. They're off council in a few months, and then we're starting all over again with a, within that new person. Councilmember Horniman.
Yeah, I just think, I mean, with requiring someone who's pulled a petition, I like the date of the petition thing, but I mean, there's a lot of candidates who have previously served on council who wouldn't have that getting up to speed time. They, they could, you know, and they would probably be very qualified compared to someone who hasn't, you know. I mean, there are multiple people that fill that role or something that could, you know, that have been appointed to different seats, that could, yes, you, in an ideal world, you want somebody who was going to be there, but at the same time, I mean, there's nobody at the meetings. There's, I mean, they probably are watching on, you know, live stream or something like that, but I don't see anybody taking notes over there that can walk in and know the legislative process immediately, other than, you know, someone who has possibly, you know, sat on council prior to that. So I think that we're losing possibly good candidates, you know, and hopefully that would inspire this person to pull a petition and run for an at-large, but I just don't want us to kind of cut somebody short who could be really good, and maybe doesn't want to do the long-term saying, but says, you know, I want to help out the city for a short term for this year.
Councilmember Kayler.
Maybe we don't have to decide right now whether the potential person has to have taken out a petition or not. Once we get a group of people, maybe some will have taken out a petition, maybe some won't, and that could be one of the factors that you take into consideration.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Law Director.
Since you have this, you know, this period of debate and disagreement over what qualifies, one thing I mentioned earlier was just the nominating process of how someone is nominated for this vacancy. You could do, as we talked about, of the process of letting the public self-nominate, and if anybody shows interest, that's sufficient, which is what's been done in the past. The other option I gave you was you could just make nominations kind of from the floor, basically as council members, so that once you receive all these letters of interest, say by February fifth, from that group, then you may then nominate one of them up for options. So then that way, if they meet criteria you're looking for, you would nominate them, since there's some differing opinions over what should qualify. And then, from that group that's nominated, then you're going to vote on those persons. So I don't know if that makes sense, but it could be a way to, let's just say you do have five or six, they could either all get nominated or several.
The other thing, as we talked about in committee of the whole, is I know that there's a lot of options, right, that we've talked about. There's, you know, differences of opinion. We don't have to decide necessarily tonight on this process. I want to make sure Um, I, I, I wanna make sure that, you know, this is thought through well. And, um, again, it sounds like there's some really good, really good discussion and, and, and good ideas. And so perhaps it might be, we need to schedule, you know, a special meeting. But then either, you know, later this week or on Monday of next week to kind of regroup on this. And, and come with some, some ideas that we can, um, you know, as we've, we've thought about this more. So, um, again, I think there's been really good discussion and, um, and ideas. So, um, I don't know if that makes sense too. Again, curious of what your guys' thoughts are. Yes, Councilmember Hayes?
If we do that, is the window of accepting applications open at this point? If somebody's interested and wants to throw their name in tomorrow? Or do we have to wait until we decide at another meeting?
I believe we have to weigh on the process to be.
You haven't said any, yeah, exactly. You haven't set any rules yet. I mean, anyone could show interest.
Sure.
Um, you could get, um, requests tomorrow, but until you, until there's a motion that's passed on the rules. Nothing's in place yet. So it may be best to sort it out right now, so that gives the public more time to gather their, um, desires and. They need to fill out a petition or not, but just to complete that, you're giving more notice. If you wait until, say, next Monday, you're just shortening up probably the window.
I will say, I, your point about somebody who's been on before might be a good candidate as well. And that, that makes sense to me and that's a point taken that I'm disagreeing with what I thought before, right, like that. And I, I'm one hundred percent for that and I kind of also agree with the statement that you should vote based off of what. Your, instead of putting that restriction on it, if we leave it open, then it's truly open to whoever. And as we decide people, if Aaron's in favor of voting for somebody that wants to stick around and has pulled a petition. Then maybe whoever's filling out their letter of interest states that in their letter, if they feel like that's going to help them. And if not, you know, that's fine too.
Yeah.
I think that leaves it more open and that we each get to make decisions about what we value best.
Right, Councilmember Horniman?
Are we gonna have an opportunity to maybe hear from the candidates or something like, I know they've done that in the past with certain openings?
Right, so I mean, again, that would be a part of the process that you guys would, whomever would make a, a motion for. But you would include that as they would have the opportunity then to come on, you know, for example, when they were talking about scheduling a special meeting for February tenth. That would be, the purpose of that would be to hear from each candidate about their interest in the role, their qualifications, any questions that we might have, et cetera. Before voting. Okay, yes, Councilmember Sne?
Madam President, so right now, they, they're interested, just resume and letter of interests, minimum.
We haven't decided on anything yet, but that, that is what we did previously, was require a letter of interest and a resume to be submitted to the city administrator. By a certain date.
I mean, that's, I think everybody could agree on those two items.
Councilmember Horniman?
Um, I was just writing down the dates and maybe, you know, have the, I like the idea of the February fifth cutoff. You know, to receive emails or letters, you know, and get them to the city administrator. February tenth, have nominations slash discussions or, you know, let, give them a chance to speak and talk about it. And then give ourselves until February eighteenth, we can vote, or have a special meeting in between there possibly.
So what you could do is have the fifth be the cutoff date for, again, resumes and letters of interest, if that's what you guys would like to require. On the tenth, you could hear from each of the candidates. Obviously, we would receive those letters of interest and resumes prior to that. As I said, the city administrator would pass those along as he receives them. So you would be prepared to speak, to ask any questions, et cetera, but have those reviewed for the, the meeting on the tenth. On the tenth, we would hear from each of the candidates and if you would like, you could actually vote that meeting. The reason I would recommend that is because of the tight timeline of the deadline being the twenty first. If we don't come to a decision that evening, we have then the eighteenth as a backup to re-invite them to the meeting. And then have that, the vote take, um, that evening. So, um, that, that's an option as well, Law Director.
Uh, and if I may add to that, if, if you were to work that out and have the person elected at the tenth. And that allows time to have them sworn in and then they would start the next regular meeting.
Right.
Um, right at the beginning, rather than you either do the voting at the beginning of that regular meeting. And then we can have them join, or you do it at the end and then they won't join until the next meeting. So this is, you know, your desire should be to fill the seat quickly.
Councilmember Thacker?
Um, taking into account the dates that we've set, I'm honestly in favor of doing it the way it's been done before. With the exception of Nick being the contact person. And the only reason I say that is that. While discourse can be messy sometimes, I think it's important to, to me at least. That the public see every aspect of what we're doing and that they feel part of it and feel. You know, if they want to reach out to us about people, that they can. So I, I, I'm in favor of it. We, we have a system that has happened in the past. We know how it works. Bridget's been through the process. She can lead us through it. That would be my suggestion. The other thing I would say is in terms of the deadline of, um, submissions. I think it should be received by, um, specifically and not mailed by, so that we know that they're here. Um, so I would say that if you feel strongly about being considered, that you have to make sure it's received.
Yeah, close business.
Like four thirty on the fifth.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it has to have something that's like in writing or like timestamp, like an email. It can't be like a phone call being, hey, I wanna do this, you know, like.
No, we would want, I, I think, it seems like everybody agrees that we'd want resumes and letters of interest.
Uh, and I think it should be de- hand-delivered, um, or a physical while not email. Cuz that shows, um, the dedication, that person's gonna wanna be a part of the council. They put the extra effort.
I, I would disagree with that.
To email it, I think it's just too easy.
People work and City Hall closes at four thirty every day.
I email mine in. It kinda streamlined the process.
Other one can run away for a lunch break to run over.
Okay, let me just, so I heard. What's being discussed is that on February fifth, this would be the deadline to receive applications by four thirty P M. I think I'm hearing that the hand-delivery would not be a requirement, that we would be okay with email. We would schedule a special meeting for February tenth to allow the candidates, um, to speak each candidate. And then, um, vote that evening, which would, if, if a decision is made, it would allow that. Um, that person to then begin on the next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be on February eighteenth. Um, but if a decision's not made that evening, then it also allows for the eighteenth for another round of voting to, uh, occur. Did I recap that correctly so far, or accurately so far? City Administrator?
Uh, just, just one point of clarification. Would council members prefer to get every resume as they come in? Or would you like them all at the end? Um, I'm fine with either one. Uh, I do feel that it would create a kind of, you, you see them all at the same time if they came at the, uh, at the deadline. Um, but entirely your call. Um, obviously, if you took them as they were coming in, you'd have more time to look at those. But then whomever the first person was that submitted, uh, potentially gets a leg up, but we're really drawing, you know. Pulling straws at that point.
Yeah, all at one time makes it, there's no confusion.
Yeah, all at once. That's fine.
Will the, will the public between the sixth and the tenth have, will the names be submitted out? So the public can know the names that were submitted or?
That's a good point.
They certainly can be. It's entirely up to councils.
It's like when we, like when we do nominations for committees and so forth, that, you know, they get the reading. So this'll give a little time for, you know, somebody sees a name out there, they could, they could reach out to us and say.
So what I could plan to do then, if, if council's okay with this being the process, um, the deadline to receive them will be four thirty P M on February fifth. Um, at that point, I would, uh, put out a email to all council members, um, that has those resumes and letters of interest in those. Um, at the same time, uh, we would, uh, put up a, a notice on social media as well as on the website with the names of those candidates. Um, I could even include links to their resume and cover letter, uh, if that's, if that's good with everyone, um, but we don't necessarily need to. So, um, just some options to, to further inform folks.
For the, for the public-facing stuff, don't put any personal information out.
That's fine. We will just put the names out.
All right, I think that makes sense. Um, I think the other piece is, again, going back to. The voting process and the elimination of the candidates, if there's more than two candidates. So I think that's something else that we need to talk about, I guess, is, again, last time when we've done this in the past. When there was that, um, for the third board position, as there was only Kevin. But prior to that, for the mayor's process, it was a majority vote. Um, and then just continuing to do rounds of that until we were, um, receiving, uh, until we got down to two, uh, candidates. So, um, if you did not receive a more, majority vote, then you were eliminated from the next round of voting, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I know there was a question that was raised of, well, what incentivizes me not to? Um, how, how do we eliminate just continuing rounds of voting until we start elimination? So I don't know if there's any ideas of, from that standpoint, to eliminate that, but, um, I mean. It's a little challenging, I think, to come up with some rules for that, but Councilmember Thacker?
I have kind of a weird suggestion. What if you have up to one less than the people that are up? And the only reason I say that is you don't have to use all of those, but you could. So say there are four people, you'd have up to three votes, so that no matter what, we're always eliminating. Somebody every round. Until we get to either a tie or a majority.
That's a good idea.
I don't know.
Councilmember Horniman?
I think that's a good idea because I can foresee a deadlock of a two, two, two. You know, on something or a three and three and nobody's budging and we just sit here and look at each other and keep voting the same thing. Cuz I've seen that.
Spinning our wheels.
Before, you know, I, something where, yeah, you can.
Any, sorry, Councilmember Thacker.
And then if we have to take, if it does become the kind of thing that people feel like they can't make a decision right then and there, then we could just say. We're gonna pause here. I think maybe somebody just brings it up, just so that there isn't out of somebody's like, I really need to like, sleep on this. Then we have that option, but at least that gets. It narrowed down almost every time.
You could just limit the number of rounds of votes, so if it remains tied after two rounds or three rounds of voting. Um, then you could agree to continue it for another time. You could have council president break, um, a tie at that point.
I like that. Okay, and all these votes are gonna be written, right?
They're all roll-call votes.
Oh, okay, all right.
So kind of two options on the table, um, was Councilmember Thacker's suggestion of having one less vote. Than the amount of candidates in order to eliminate the continuous rounds of voting. Or, uh, Law Director's suggestion of just limiting the rounds of voting and then myself being the tiebreaker in that scenario, so.
Well, if I could clarify, I think that was in conjunction, so.
Oh, I see, I see. Got it. Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Few other, just looking back at what we did in the past, part of, uh, qualifying was not just getting your. Letter, self-interested resume in on time. It was also then to be present at, um, the next meeting. So in your case, it would be, they have to be present at the February tenth special meeting.
Of course, yeah.
So if you don't show up, you're already eliminated.
I think for me, it was like a five-minute presentation.
Okay, is there anything else that we need to think about? City Administrator?
Uh, I feel like this does go without saying, but just to put it out there, um, obviously, whomever this is does need to be a qualified elector of the city of Tiffin. So have to be a resident and registered to vote. Um, those are the requirements.
Yeah, if I may just add on to that, not just a resident, but you've been a resident for at least a year, um, in order to qualify. And since it's at-large, it's just within the city. Um, I know I sent that to you all, but yeah, thank you, Nick. I was gonna touch on that. But yeah, you have to be, um, you have to meet the requirements under the charter.
Anything else? Councilmember Reesner, are you raising your hand?
Well, this is for the finance committee stuff, but when you're ready to.
Okay, well, I think we need to make a, someone needs to make a motion this evening, um, so that regarding the process, outlining the process that we talked about. Yeah, and, um, and then we would need to a- approve that as council in order to move forward and adopt that. So I, I think at this time, I would entertain a motion for, uh, the, the processes discussed. Councilmember Reesner?
So moved.
Okay.
By your rules, you have to state.
I see, I.
Your motion, but.
I, I moved to, um, um, make the rule as, what, what we came to the last conclusion here. As per the, what you said, uh. With the voting rules, so.
If you, I, I, if you like, I can maybe give you a little wording, so just looking at what was done in the past. So your motion would be that, um, any qualified voter, um, in the city of Tiffin to submit their letter of interest and resume. Um, for the council member at large to the city administrator, um, by Wednesday, February fifth at four thirty P M. And then be present at the council's special meeting on February tenth. Um, to express why they're interested in the position and answer any questions. Um, and then a, uh, roll-call vote will be taken for the candidates. I guess, it, it, then how, everyone finished that, how they, you know, in, until there are two candidates and then.
The president would be the tiebreaker.
President would be the tiebreaker and that, um, I think when you get down to your last two, your vote is for the person. In that case, so if you, candidate A and B, your vote is for A or B, not yes or no on A.
Yeah, that's.
Good. Anything to add there?
And if after three rounds, there's no candidate, then another, um, meeting will be scheduled or five rounds. They did five rounds previously, but you could drop it to less.
So I think that needs to be stated in your motion, correct?
So.
Seconded, not first.
Well, I can't make the motion. Um, if you, if you want the, I can give you this. You wanna make the motion.
Say, I could do it.
You just gotta, gotta, like, what's done in the past. Change that a bit.
February eighteenth and fifth, okay. All right, so any regi- uh, my motion is so that any registered resident submit their cover letter and resume. To the city administrator by February fifth with the cutoff at four thirty P M. And be present at the February tenth special meeting, which is at what time? That's.
We haven't said it.
Just say the special.
The special meeting, yeah. And be prepared under other business to express why they're interested and to answer questions. And asked in order of roll-call. Roll-call, roll-call will be taken for a majority vote. If there is a tie, the council president will be the tiebreaker. Uh, if after five rounds, no candidate is chosen, another meeting won't be scheduled. Anything else?
Uh, okay, um, so there is a motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Sne?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none. Um, seeing none, can I do a voice vote or? Seeing none, um, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, the motion carries. Okay, thank you. Um, before we get into the finance committee stuff, um, for the special meeting. Can we look at times, um, that everyone's available for that February tenth? Um, would five thirty be permissible for everyone? Does that work for you?
Is it five thirty?
Mm-hmm. Do you need it later?
No, I, I can do five thirty.
Okay. Does that work for you, Mary?
Yes.
City Administrator, all good? Anne, does that work for you? Awesome. Okay, um, so at this time, I would like to call a special meeting for February tenth. Awesome, okay, so at this time, I would like to call a special meeting for February tenth. The purpose of this meeting, I'm sorry, at five thirty P M in council chambers. The purpose of this meeting will be to allow any candidates interested in the at-large positions. That have submitted their resumes and letter of interest by the required deadline. To allow them to speak regarding their interest in the role, as well as answer any questions from council. And then for council to take a vote that evening on the, on the candidates. And no other business, correct? Awesome, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Regarding the mayor's request for legislation twenty five oh six, the allocation of the opioid settlement funds. And the mayor's request for legislation twenty five oh seven, the application to NOPEC energize community grant. Anybody have opposition to me not scheduling a meeting and just having the legislation prepared for this? And this is the finance committee. We've talked a lot about the opioid settlement funds already, so, but I'm happy to schedule a meeting if anybody wants me to.
John's not gonna be, will be here for the meeting. He's in the finance meeting, so, that's like two.
Two, the the only thing I would say is, I believe the police department is coming to present on the DARE program. And I don't know if you'll hear that before a decision on legislation. So I, I just food for thought.
You think, just do the meeting, okay. So, it's the tenth?
The presentation of the DARE program will be on the eighteenth.
Was that the eighteenth? Okay, so we could, we could, any opposition to foregoing those meetings then?
Well, or I think what the law director's saying is, you could wait until.
Oh, after that?
After the DARE presentation and then reconsider whether.
Gotcha.
Wanted to have that as a part of a meeting, City Administrator.
I'm sorry, just, I, for the purposes of the NOPEC grant, if we can get that moving earlier, that would be great. It's something you pass every year. We we are receiving funds from NOPEC this year, this just allows me to get on the schedule to get that approved. So that we can receive some some grant funds back for that. As far as the opioid settlement, it may be worthwhile to have a county, a committee meeting just to kind of spell out what council's intentions are. We potentially talking about quite a bit of funds that are hopefully gonna help the community. So it it may be worthwhile to have a meeting after the eighteenth. However, council would choose to do so, not to tell you how to do things, I'm just giving you some some food for thought.
So would it be better just to wait and announce the meeting maybe at a later?
Well, I think what the city administrator is asking, if we could have maybe two potentially finance committee meetings, the first one would be regarding the NOPEC.
Either you could, or you could just go ahead and.
That's the end, yeah.
Request legislation be made, that's up to you.
But just to move forward on that, and then potentially after the DARE presentation.
Okay.
Having a a meeting on opioids.
Okay, so we could announce the opioid light meeting later, and then if you could prepare the legislation for the NOPEC. Twenty five oh seven.
Is there any other business to come before council this evening? Law Director.
My apologies, one thing I just meant to say earlier, I didn't want to get too ahead until John. Councilmember Kayler made his announcement. I think I just remind you, I'll give your financial disclosure with the Ohio Ethics Commission to do, and the general deadline is May fifteenth. But, you know, if you are candidate for office, you also have to do this disclosure. So just really for public benefit, anyone that is gonna turn in a petition for, say, council member at large or council president. They've got until April seventh to submit their financial disclosures. Also, though, if you're an incumbent, your your top, your deadline is a little different. So if you haven't done it, if you, this is, I'm just reading from their post. If you're certified to the ballot prior to May fifteenth, then you have thirty days prior to the first election. So your timeline could be moved up from May fifteenth, so in your interest to get it done sooner than later. And just for the public, again, what, to be considered, as the administrator said. You need to live in the city, you need to be a registered voter, you have to have lived here for a year. Just in order to to qualify for this, it'll be a vacant seat here in a couple minutes. In order then to fill that seat, once you're voted in, you'll have to take your oath. We can, whoever that person is, I'll talk with, we can do it immediately at that meeting, we can do it later. But before you start, you have to take that oath of office. They'll also have to make sure they have their financial disclosure, and if they already don't, it's due fifteen days after they take their oath. And then we also have to give them the ethics packet, so they'll have a few things right out of the gate. So hopefully, this person is, you know, ready to to get going right.